Everyone for coming. Crystal, will you see if we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Contreras, Councilmember Vincent, Councilmember Runable, Mayor Proton Lee Young, Councilmember Nathan Crumel, and Mayor Moss.
Thank you. At this time, would you please stand? Pastor Jack Hunt of the Church Well Church will lead us in invocation. Pastor Hunt.
Thank you. Oh, we love you, and we thank you for tonight. We thank you for the blessings of our city. We thank you for the prosperity. We thank you for our citizens. We thank you for our first responders. Father, we thank you for our mayor and our city council administrators. We pray that you would give wisdom and give guidance. Thank you for your years of experience and knowledge. We pray that you would add to that tonight. Lord, let your plans and your purposes prevail in these meetings. We pray that your will be done this evening and the nights to come. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I want to ask Tyler Van Zandt of Metairie on our council to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Pastor. First item on the agenda is to approve the council meeting minutes of October the 12th, 2021, and a special meeting on October 19th, 2021. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second. Any other questions or discussion?
Is that Vincent, he seconded it?
No, it was Greg.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number one on the agenda is to consider an act on designating the official newspaper of the city of Willow Park for the fiscal year 2021-2022. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, we had tabled this at a previous meeting, and we have brought it back up. Hold on for one moment while I get to my packet. We have historically used the community news, and there was a question about if we wanted to continue that. Staff recommendation is that we do continue using the community news. We did spend roughly $15,000 and change in legal fees and notices last year. We did do some price comparisons and shoppings with the other publication in Parker County. Community news is probably a little bit more expensive, but I think the benefit of supporting the local business would be paramount here.
Any other questions for Mr. Grimes? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution designating the official newspaper of the city of Willow Park as the community news.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, to approve a resolution establishing rules for public participation in city council meetings. We have a couple to speak on it. First one would be Ms. Amy Fennell. If you come forward, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Amy Fennell. I live at 1304 Saddle Trail, and I'm coming here to speak on HB 2840 today. HB 2840 was a monumental piece of legislation that was passed during the last legislative session. Terry Canales authored this piece of legislation, and what makes it such a phenomenal act is the fact that Terry Canales is a Democrat. The idea for this bill was brought to him by a far-right watchdog group called Owls. Now, he worked with Owls and drafted this piece of legislation that enables residents, citizens, to participate in local government and speaking. He took that bill to Austin, and it passed through the House and the Senate phenomenally, overwhelmingly. Now, what is so amazing about this is that a Democrat and a far-right group work together for the betterment of local government. The reason I'm bringing up 2840 is because in the packet about passing a resolution tonight, you're using 2840 as a legal argument against people speaking for their full three minutes. The part that if you want to limit residents to speaking three minutes, fine, but do not pervert the spirit of HB 2840 by giving the presiding officer the authority to reduce the amount of time that a resident has to speak just on a whim, based upon how many speakers. People should be able to predict and know how much time that they have to speak, because it takes a lot to get up here and speak. So, 2840 is not a viable argument to give just one person the ability to reduce a resident's ability to participate in local government.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. KJ Hannah. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is KJ Hannah. I live at 177 Melbourne Drive in Willow Park. Mayor and council, the ordinance for minimizing the voice of Willow Park citizens is not Willow Park. This ordinance is not you. After the lengthy and uncomfortable public comments during the 28 September council meeting, one council member publicly thanked those who spoke for their comments and encouraged citizens to continue their involvement. Thank you. One council publicly thanked the citizens and asked for the issue to be put on the council agenda. Thank you. Thank you. And directly after that council meeting and for a few days afterwards, several of the council communicated with several of the citizens, assuring them the issue would be addressed. Thank you. And one council approached me before the next council meeting and thanked me for attending and voicing my concerns. Thank you. And in the past, our three most senior council members and our mayor have met often with individuals, individual citizens, and with groups of citizens to participate and to encourage discussions about the direction of Willow Park. Thank you. Each of you has sought the counsel of the citizens of Willow Park. This ordinance is not you. This ordinance is not Willow Park. Reducing citizen public comments under the excuse of managing the length of council meetings within a reasonable time period is an unreasonable attempt to silence our voices and to discourage conversations. In seeking the counsel of the citizens of Willow Park, you are respecting and supporting your constituents and your neighbors. In curtailing the voices of the citizens, you are indicating you have found other influencers for your decisions who are more important to you than us. This ordinance does not represent the elected leaders who the citizens of Willow Park have followed, supported, and respected. As always, I thank you for your public service.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes?
Are we on two?
Yes.
You want to do it?
Sure. And Ms. Fennell is correct. This bill was passed in 2019. When I first came here, I was very surprised to see that this council did not have speaker rules in place. I'm also finding statewide here recently that I've gotten some emails from city secretaries that their council are also looking into passing such laws, or should I say rules, but not really laws, rules, policies. These are very, very reasonable. I respect your comments, Ms. Hannah and Ms. Fennell. I do want to make it clear for those of you that were not able to read Section 3 for time limitations. The only way, the only part in Section 3 for time limitations that the mayor, the presiding officer, will reduce the time is if there is an unusually large number of speakers to file a request form requesting to speak at the council meeting, the presiding officer may reduce the applicable time limits as necessary to complete the meeting within a reasonable time period. That's only if there is a large amount of speakers. Now, every person that wants to come up and submits their four or five minutes before the meeting at a regular meeting such as this one, you are going to get your three minutes. That is not changing. So, I just want to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
When does that apply, then, for the reduction of time? If everybody does it before, can you clarify when that could be?
It just states that there's an unusually large amount. Say, for instance, on the 28th, we had quite a bit of speakers. It's up to the providing officer whether they feel like we need to minimize the time less than the three minutes.
And would speakers be notified? Everybody, for instance, the mayor would say, due to the large number tonight, we're going to give everybody two minutes instead of three, and not just a, I've had enough, we're cutting you off now. It's going to be a designated time and not just at the whim of...
Right. It's just trying to get the top of some...
Right. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that there would be set boundaries before we...
If you've ever gone to the Capitol and had to testify, that happens frequently, where they will, in fact, what you just said happens a lot, where they'll start testimony. And of course, theirs is, I'm not trying to compare the two other than how it functions, but they will start testimony at five minutes or three minutes or whatever they arbitrarily decide, and the chair has decided, and then they'll come out and say, everybody's got one minute to speak. And then they gavel you off, and they bring the next group back in. It's fairly common in the legislature to do that. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of point that out. Section, what is it, 55, I'm assuming this is the gross version that was signed by the governor. 551, what is it?
Oh, yes.
555.001 subsection C, governmental body may adopt reasonable rules regarding the public's right to address the body under this section, including rules that limit the total amount of time that a member of the public may address the body on a given item. And so, that is straight from 2840.
Yeah, so to be clear, it's the prerogative of the mayor?
The chair.
The chair.
Could be the mayor pro temp.
Okay, whoever's the chair. I don't think anybody's trying to silence anyone, to be clear. So, let's just not go down the path of us trying to silence the citizens. That's not the case here. When I have something on the books that gives rules and regulations on how to do business, I see you shaking your head. I'll be happy to speak to you. Okay, so three minutes. We understand you still have your three minutes. Up to the chair if there's a large amount. So, that's, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Could the chair grant more time if the speaker requested it?
It's up to them. How many is a large crowd?
Excuse me. So, no comments.
So, in the last six, seven years, I can recall maybe less than a handful of times, we had numerous people, I would say that's maybe 10 or more, that this happened. So, I think we're thinking about trying to address the exception rather than the rule. So, for the most part, you know, our standard three minutes is sufficient and worked well. And when we have those very controversial issues that have to be addressed, then, you know, so be it. I mean, it's going to take a little longer.
Well, I agree with Tyler. It's not meant to silence anyone. It's just to bring some order to a meeting.
When, I asked Brian about this specifically. I wanted to have a foundation, but I wanted a foundation so people knew exactly what they were going to do when they spoke. My opinion is I want it to be five minutes that people can speak. If we do have a large group that is wanting to speak, then I think everybody needs to know what the floor is, and I think the floor should be three. So, what I would like to see is five minutes to speak, because I have spoken before in front of council. I've spoken in other settings as well. Three minutes is pretty hard. Five is a pretty good number. My opinion, I think five is a great number, and if we have a large group that want to speak, I think then we have something written down that says the floor is three. So, they get three minutes.
Okay.
That is my opinion on this.
I would agree with Eric. I would say two points. That was exactly the point I was going to make, is to go to Greg's point. Over the years, this has historically not been an issue. We've had three or four meetings in my time here that have exceeded what I would consider a normal public comment time, which I think would be about 20 minutes. If we allow 20 minutes of every one of our meetings, that we expect that, that is, at five minutes, that's four speakers. That just does not happen regularly. So, to allow five minutes for most, as you said, if you have facts that you need to present for your argument, that can take you three minutes before you get to your discussion that you want. So, that, and I've said that for citizens who have come in to discuss their ditch or their drainage or something. Sometimes it's going to take me three minutes to tell you what I'm talking about. So, I do agree with the five minutes. I also do agree with Greg's. I don't necessarily need a policy to address an exception until that exception starts disrupting our business on a regular basis. And then I would, the other thing I would ask, and this is something, I did discuss some of this with, and made some changes on Friday, very last minute. Thank you, staff, for accommodating my hopping on a plane and not being able to work with us prior to that. But the issue of potentially, I'm going to say, we're writing a policy that can be changed in the future, but also supersedes the group of people now, to that I would like to see that the council would approve any changes to a standard five-minute or whatever. If the presiding officer, and I recognize that sometimes could be me that has the authority in this case, I would like to see that the council, if the council wants to hear a longer public comment session, they have the opportunity to override the presiding council. If it's just something that, and I say that, Doyle, not because I think you would abuse it, but if we're writing a policy that should last beyond this group of people, I think that that would be fair to say that other council members could say, we don't agree that we want to shorten it. We want to hear every five minutes, three minutes, all 500 people that walk through the door. So, those are my comments on the policy.
Were you thinking just one council member, or you would need a...
A vote by council to change the standard policy at a meeting.
Yeah.
You know, if we're going to change from what the standard is to reduce time, I think that would require the whole council to agree. We agree that three minutes is appropriate, or two is appropriate, or whatever we're changing from our standard. That's what I would want.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. I agree with all that.
Well, so my proposal would be to postpone the vote so that we could rework some of these thoughts that we had.
Would you like to bring it back in December, or do you want to do it in January?
I would say postpone.
Yes.
Table?
You can pick the meeting that you want.
So, you just want to say a future meeting?
Yes, future meeting. So, my motion would be to postpone, to address the issues of potentially five-minute limit, council having a vote, and was there anything else specifically that we wanted?
A floor of three.
Floor of three.
A floor of three.
Right. So, if there is a...
Never going to...
Everybody knows they get three minutes.
That you never walk in and can be reduced.
Correct.
I would make a motion that we consider those changes with Pat's eloquence to writing it. Postpone that to a future meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, correction of city limits boundary of Interstate 20 Service Road East and Bay Hill Drive. Betty?
Good evening, mayor and council. Last month's meeting, we had a petition for annexation, and in looking at the boundary of the city limits in the area of Bay Hill Drive and the South Service Road, we reviewed it with the surveyor, with our engineer, and we also consulted with the city attorney. There is ambiguity. It is not clear from the records of incorporation of the city if that was where the actual boundary is, and we could not find field notes to substantiate the boundary being as it is shown, was shown on the map. So, the recommendation is that the council consider adopting this amended or corrected boundary in this area only, and then we can go forth and proceed with the annexation. And you have in your packet, actually, I highlighted it on my copy, the herein in yellow was the question, and we could not locate field notes in that area that substantiated it was or was not within the city. So, this correction, if approved by council, would adjust the map, and then that would allow us to proceed with the annexation, because the property will still be adjoining the city limits.
Okay. Any questions for Betty?
Yes, is this just a lack of meets and bounds for the area? And to kind of, I guess, expand on that, just as a former land man, just curious how that...
The meets and bounds, if you go back, and I've looked over the last probably four or five years, you know, when we have, when we try to trace the boundaries of the original city limits, and then we go to annexations, there are several spots where there are gaps in the field notes, and we could not locate any, either annexation or, there was, there were two disannexations that occurred, but they're in another part of town. But, you know, it's not unusual, I guess, that, because the interstate highway was not as it is now, and that could possibly, the surveyor indicated that could possibly be it. But there are some gaps in the field notes for the boundaries of the city.
Did we get a second opinion as far as a second surveyor looking at this?
We had our engineer look at it, and the surveyor from his phone looked at it.
Okay. Betty, this is R1, it comes in?
All property when it's annexed into the city comes in as R1.
And then has to be...
Yeah, that's going to be the next.
Go to P and Z.
Yes.
P and Z and all that. Okay. So, our most restrictive zoning?
Yes.
Just so everybody knows.
That's the next agenda item.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, does this update our zoning map? Does this, I mean, we're looking at a small portion of this, but our total zoning map will be updated, reflected on this if we accept it?
This will reflect the commercial property where extreme exterior is, which is what is in. That will remain. The other areas will now be in the ETJ.
Okay.
And then your next item is a petition for a portion of the property.
Okay.
And if adopted, we will go in and adjust the extraterritorial jurisdiction in that area.
So, do you just need a motion to correct the city limits boundary?
Yes, in this area, for the exhibit A.
I'll make a motion that we correct the city limits boundary of IH Service Road East and Bay Hill Drive in exhibit A, as presented in exhibit A.
Second. Okay, any other questions for Betty? All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, to consider a petition requesting annexation of a 19.16 acre tract of land located east of Bay Hill Drive in the city of Willow Park, extraterritorial jurisdiction. Betty?
Thank you, mayor. D and M, which is the Texas General Partnership, is requesting annexation by petition. It is a voluntary annexation of this vacant 19.16 acre tract of land. It is adjacent to the city limits, the adjusted city limits, approved by council. You did hold your public hearing that is required per statute and per our local ordinance on October the 12th. So, the only action that is left, if the council chooses to annex the property, is to adopt the ordinance and the service agreement, which will complete the annexation process.
Okay. It just says dash 21.
You'll need to give it the ordinance number.
The resolution number.
No, it's...
Yeah, I'm looking at different agenda items.
Yes.
Do we have an ordinance number?
Okay, so, we're not going to pre-number ordinances, immersions, and no longer. I've come into some very serious issues with the ordinances, and it's...
The numbering.
The numbering system.
We don't pre-number them. So, you're going to pass an ordinance, and then I will give it the next assigned number.
Okay, so we're, the motion will be to adopt the ordinance annexing the property.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
We will need to read the heading.
Yeah, read the caption.
Okay.
All right. I make a motion to adopt the ordinance to be numbered dash 21, an ordinance annexing the herein after-described territory to the city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, and extending the boundary limits of said city so as to include said herein-after-described property within said city limits and granting to all the inhabitants of said property all the rights and privileges of other citizens and binding said inhabitants by all of the acts, ordinances, resolution, and regulations of said city in adopting a service plan.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
The only thing I would bring up since our public hearing was previous, since we did have citizens, is the concerns that the citizens brought forth were not specifically with annexation. It would be the next phase, and that would be the zoning, plan development, whatever else would come into play that we could now control through the annexation. So, just to kind of highlight what we heard previously from the citizens at the public hearing, I think that that, annexing the property does not go against anything that the citizens who spoke were concerned about.
To be clear, this property will come in as R1, and then the rezoning process.
So, I do support.
Okay.
The annexation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Item number five, financial update from Jake Weber. Jake, you're up.
Good evening. So, this is going to be the financials for the entire fiscal year. So, this will give us a good picture. Obviously, you can see what's happened for the last fiscal year. As always, if any questions, anything, just let me know. So, just looking at the first page, you know, just again, I'll highlight some things that jumped out to me, just things to point out. The general fund, up 342,000. So, that was, you know, great news. Historically, that's always been probably the fund that has maybe broken even or been, you know, small deficit. And so, your taxes, which we've talked about, the sales tax kind of carrying that, and then also your development have really helped on those to bring that up. And so, one of the things I did is, you know, we got some COVID money that's in that, and also we transferred some stuff out to the park. So, I kind of just did some quick math to say, okay, well, if we didn't... to say, okay, well, if we didn't get any of the COVID money, we didn't supplement the park with the bathrooms that were put in there, you'd still be up 280,000, you know, in your general fund. So that was, you know, that's obviously great news with where you're going with your budget, and also just with the growth in the city that y'all have had the last couple of years. And so that was one thing I want to point out there. Again, water and wastewater continue to be steady there. There'll be, one thing I'll point out on the user fees, we've been low most of the year. We did catch up, and you'll see we're up pretty good amount on those. There was some one-time fees that came in to help those a little bit, but even without those, you still would have been a small surplus there. So you can kind of look there and just see, even as comparison to budget, you know, in terms of when you look at your budget process, you know, you're pretty darn close, you know, especially on your water and wastewater, in terms of your actual budget on your revenue and expense items. That speaks to some of the due diligence you guys have been doing on that side as to where we ended up at. On the project tracker, you know, you kind of see what we're at on that. On the water line, obviously, a lot of that work has been done, so I would expect, you know, when the audit is done, you know, the cost number reflected there is basically what we had when I was able to prepare these. That number is going to be more, because a lot of the work was substantially complete. So I think there's something to be done there, but I'd imagine as we start to get invoices for that, some of those will get pushed back into this fiscal year we're looking at, because that was when the work was performed, but you can see that's based off of the numbers that we had at that time. And then obviously, the package plan came in. So the one other item I want to point out there is that CLF RF funds, I'm sure y'all are familiar with that, but that is the money that we got in, that 723,000, so that's money that we got in essentially COVID relief funds to local governments. So we got half August, September, we're going to get another, that exact same amount in about 12 months from then. And so that has to be used within a certain time period, I believe it's by the end of '24, if I'm right, and I think y'all talked about using for water, wastewater infrastructure. And so that's just something to keep an eye on, make sure that that is being done accordingly and following, and they'll probably have to get a single audit on that as well, once those funds start getting used. Going to the detail, just again, I'll highlight a few things there. Sales tax, you see 1,455,000, so that was up about 231,000 from last year, so you're at 1, 2, 2, 3 the prior year, so that's obviously your big revenue driver. Again, your billing permits, which a lot of that is coming earlier in the year, you can see your 555,000, which is significantly over budget. I was going to point out one thing, I know we've talked a lot about, or we've talked in the past meetings about some of the court revenue. It did jump a little bit in Q4, so that did help a little bit. You could see our court administrative costs are still at about 50% of budget, but some of the fines and forfeitures that came in, that entire category ended up being about 73% for the year, so it did catch up a little bit in the final quarter, so just want to kind of update you on that. I'm just looking to see some of the detail. So if you go to page, really, from an expense standpoint, if you look at just some of the totals and the categories, you can see a lot of the expenses were under budget, so that's another big reason why, in terms of the net, we end up ahead, you know, like supplies, things like that, for whatever reason, we didn't spend as much. I know we didn't do a lot of the road work, you know, there's a little bit of road maintenance, things like that, we just, against the most costs we're spending. So obviously, when the year is over, you can see that helps you out. The other item I was going to say, so on the water fund, the user charges, so I was, you know, we're up on that just user charge, I'm on page 11 right now, was over budget by about 97,000, so 85,000 of that was like a one-time fee for some of the apartments, I guess the connection, maybe some change in the billing that was done there, and so they owed that money, so I was like, I'm paying a one-time payment. So obviously, that's not, you know, going to be recurring, but that, even without that, you see, we still exceeded budget. So we had a really good fourth quarter, because we were behind for most of the year on some of the user charges there. The other thing I was going to point out, so if you look again on your wastewater, a similar situation, we end up at 658 for the year, 600 was budgeted, and so that's obviously the one item we're keeping an eye on, is you got some additional debt coming in in the future years, as to continue to bring in additional revenue there. You know, just from a cash standpoint, so again, looking at page 16 on your bank accounts, you could see it just on your general fund, you can see obviously where we're at, you know, about 117,000, and just that general operating cash to 575 now, so obviously, that's, reserve-wise, that's great, you know, it gives you a little more cushion than that general fund. You know, that's the area where water fund, we always had real good reserves, well, now general fund, you're really beefing that up, gives you a little more financial flexibility, you know, just in terms of timing of expenses, things like that, so that, you know, that's good to see on that side of it. The other thing I was going to point, or that I was going to mention that is not in this packet, I know one of the new charges that you guys have set up is that drainage fee, and I know that's going to be talked about, so I just ran some numbers, just so you guys had a feel for that. So the billing started on that in August, and there's a parcel for that, it was about 14,000 in revenue, but September, October, October billings were just under 28,000 per month, so that puts you at about 330,000 for the year for billings on that, so that kind of gives you a feel for, you know, okay, what you want to use that money for down the road as that starts to come in. Obviously, again, that just started in August, so you have about two and a half, three months that are starting to build up in that account. But just for reference, about 330 is, I think, for the year annually is what you'd be at on that. Any questions, anything, you know, year-to-date, like I said, all the funds really, you know, were strong, they stood on their own. Obviously, you can continue to see the revenue growth, which what you had. You know, I think in terms of the debt planning, things like that, it's really worked out pretty well in terms of managing the growth, how you guys have done now. Any questions, anything?
Thank you, Jake.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you. Item number six, to appoint Sean Gilliland to the TERS board. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, Barry Tatum is no longer eligible to serve on the board, and so the recommendation from Mayor Moss is to appoint Sean Gilliland. He's actually interviewed here for a council member spot, I believe, a year ago, maybe, a year, yeah, a year ago. And so Mayor Moss reached out to Sean and asked if he was willing to serve, and I actually spoke to Sean last week, and he said he was willing to serve. His TERS board application is in the other packet as well.
Any questions, or do we have a motion, please?
I move that the Willow Park City Council appoint Sean Gilliland to the TERS board effective immediately.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number seven is to appoint Steve Gould to the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, similar situation with the passing of Father J. Atwood, an opening became available on the BOA, and Mayor Moss and staff are recommending Steve Gould to serve on that. Steve has served on our City Hall Committee, and has provided some good input on that committee as well.
Do we have any questions, or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, we appoint Stephen Gould to the BOA.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number eight, to approve a resolution setting a public hearing for the reduction of the boundaries of tax increment reinvestment zone number one. Ms. Betty?
Thank you, Mayor. We have had a request to reduce the boundary of tax increment zone number one. That is, that was the 230.84 acre tract, commonly known as TERS number one, or Willow Park North Development, which encompassed not only the area on the extension of, adjacent to the extension of Meadows Place Drive, but also all of our green belt in that area, as well as the shops at Willow Park and the commercial development on the west side of Fairport at the Trinity. The TERS tax increment reinvestment zones are financing tools to be used in the development or redevelopment of a defined area. So this is part of a process that we'll be going through, and the first step is to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing. The TERS board will now meet to consider this request. By amending the TERS, you're actually taking a portion of that property which could serve as funding for future development. If the property is removed from the TERS, then of course, it would, we would come back and look at development of the property. The zoning doesn't go away, but to redevelop the property unless they developed it exactly as it is zoned, then they would need to come back through, either with conventional zoning or possibly a planned development, and then of course, once that's approved, then there would be the platting of the property. So this is a multi-step function, but the first requirement is set out in Chapter 311 of the Local Government Code is to adopt this resolution, which would set the public hearing to consider the TERS board's recommendation on this request for your December the 14th, 2021 meeting. Approximately 47.42 acres is what the request is for, is to reduce the TERS, that would leave about 180 plus or minus acres left within the TERS zone.
So all we're doing tonight is setting the public hearing?
Yes.
That's right, and that will allow, subsequent to that, the TERS board will need to consider the request and make a recommendation to council at the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the reduction of the boundaries of the tax increment reinvestment zone number one for the next, how much lead time do we need?
December 14.
December the 14th, maybe.
That's sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, December the 14th.
City Council meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
7:00 PM.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Is that being timed?
Yes.
Do we need to read this resolution?
We'll be arriving.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number nine, we're moving to next time, is that right, Mr. Grimes?
Yes, the city engineer is at a funeral today, and so he's unable to attend, and so.
Ding, motion.
No, just take no action. Take no action, all right, yeah.
Item number 10, update on street and park system improvement projects.
So we've been discussing street improvements for probably the last, at least three meetings that I can remember, but I know we've done stuff before that. At the last meeting, we were, staff was tasked with trying to figure out a package that was somewhere bigger than a bread box and smaller than something else, but we got with the engineer, we have found projects that could potentially fit into a $5 million window. The debt service information that you were provided at the last meeting was for five and a half million dollars, so you do have some room if you want to pursue some parks improvements. Your $5 million, it's actually 5,25,000, would be all of your concrete projects, so that would be Kingsgate, that'd be San Bass to Ranch House Road, that would be Crown from Ranch House down to, I guess, the Crown Valley entrance, wherever the city of Weatherford takes over. And that would also be Ranch House from Crown to Vista. It would also include improvements on Old Ford Road to Squaw Creek, it'd also include the little cul-de-sacs, sorry, the cul-de-sacs that are off of Old Ford Road, Pleasant Court, and Crested Butte Court. It would include San Bass Court, Trinity Court, and Trinity Drive, and those would be $5 million of road improvements.
It was seven and a half million that they just, that we approved last time?
You approved seven and a half million at the September, the first or second meeting in September.
We published seven and a half.
Yeah, you pub, yes, no, sorry, you approved us to publish seven and a half.
Are you ready for comments and questions?
Yes.
So what we would be doing tonight is to set the final amount that we're going to have Eric Maha do, issue the certificate of obligation. For the specific, we have a number here of basically 5 million, we could do 6.7 million, and then we have parks around 400,000 that we could add in. After the certificates of obligation are issued, is there a process that we specifically say these are all the projects? Is that when we approve bid packages, or how does, how does the selection of the actual?
The actual streets?
Right, if we're picking a number now, do we have another step where we say these are now the projects that are, is that how it works?
So you're, it's very rare you're going to hit it on the nose.
Right.
I mean, so you're going to have, you may have some shortfalls, you may have something.
And these are estimates.
These are cost estimates with contingencies and engineering already built in.
Okay.
So there may, it may be possible that you'll have an excess of funds, if there is, then you can, we can certainly look.
So we would ask Derek to prepare a more in-detailed cost estimate for these projects, and then we would say, now we pick this to match what we've issued.
Yeah, it depends on what the bid, I mean, it's going to depend on what the bids are. We have learned in the last 12 months that bids are kind of all over the place with infrastructure projects. It may be the bids are higher than this, and we may have to cut from that list.
Okay.
It may be that we can have some cost savings somewhere in there, and we have excess funds.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that there's a point in the future when we specifically say what the projects are. We're picking the total number tonight.
Yeah, you're picking the number tonight with the idea that you're going to do the projects that are recommended. Now, clearly, y'all want to change those, it's up to you, but that's, you got to have, you got to start somewhere.
Right.
So the $5 million number, where did that come from? That is like a 100% chance we won't have to increase the增值税 tax, or what are we saying here?
I don't know if there's 100% chance of anything. I feel very comfortable about that, about five, five and a half million, to not have to increase the tax rate in next August or September, whenever we adopt it. I feel comfortable with that, I'm not going to.
And the seven and a half was?
Seven and a half, you're probably going to need to be prepared to raise the tax rate.
I think five is something we can work with.
What was the $800,000 rebate?
So that's part of the TERS. It's an eligible project in the TERS. The TERS is not, to quote Betty, it's not a big old pile of money, it's just sitting out there.
Right.
We would actually have to issue the debt to cover Kingsgate in this case.
And then retroactively go after the?
And then we would be paid back over probably a 20-year window. So I don't know if the juice is really worth the squeeze.
I mean, I say we pursue it.
You could pursue it, but you're, you're, you're not going to get an instant, you're not saving 700,000.
Instant influx of 800,000, but, yes.
So our risk right now is if we did go to a higher number, we're pretty good chances we're going to get a pretty attractive interest rate, whereas three to five years from now, whenever we come back to revisit these projects, or if not sooner, we could be experiencing interest rates significantly higher, potentially, right?
I'm not going to.
Not going to go there?
Greg is really trying to put some words.
Could be lower. What's that?
Could be lower.
Could be, could be lower than zero?
If I could predict interest rates in two years, and I could predict fuel rates in two years.
So my, my opinion is that we go for the maximum out right now, because we can get pretty, pretty well guaranteed, pretty attractive interest rate, which is going to buy us a lot more bang for the buck, so to speak, to take a bite out of what these roads have to be, you know, these, what are they, 22 miles that we can get a third of them done at this point? It would be very nice, so. I think with the interest rates where they are now, we could really do a lot of great, a lot of really good things with these road situation.
There is a, if you're interested in that, to Greg's point, there's a second box in your packet. box in your packet, and that would include Ox Hunt Trail to Ranch House, Woodbridge, San Bass Road, which is east of Ranch House, and then Asper, Asper Wood Drop. It'd be this area that's basically behind us. If you did that, your total would run to around six point seven million, which is not seven point five, but that's still, that's a healthy number.
And we're leveraged at that point. I think it was Eric that brought it up in the last meeting. We are, till the debt cliff falls off.
You're, you're, you're limiting what you could do in the future.
Right. I think that's how we got to the five million.
I'll bring up the other point, just as we discussed the final number, because obviously the roads, looking at your chart, your yellow chart and the yellows, we have a five million dollar number and a six point seven million dollar number of the choice, kind of for the roads. The second page of what we have there is parks. And so what we had, just to go over that, we had a Parks Board meeting last night, covered a lot of issues. We asked Pacheco and Koch to come up with some cost estimates for some improvements to Cross Timbers Park, some of the things that we could look at there. These are, I'm going to say, pretty high numbers based on not a lot of time to put together a cost estimate, so I'm comfortable that the choices would be lower, and that's why I was asking, Brian, if you approve something for it, can we go back and get some clarity on actual costs from, after a design phase to, to know that these are better, better numbers? So looking at their total, thirty percent contingency, of course, that's pretty high. Four hundred thousand dollars to add something to this C O that would be parks related. So I would love to see if we're doing the five million and we're doing, or the seven and a half million, with somewhere between those, if we could allot some of that for parks. It's already in the thing, but I'd just like to speak to, I don't, if you need to, we can go over some of the specifics there, but there's always opportunities for getting other funding for some of these items, donations and things like that. But the idea that we could really work to upgrade some of the things at Cross Timbers Park with some picnic tables, seating, shade structures for our parents, stuff like that, that's some of, and a potential crossing of Ranch House from Memorial Garden, Garden over here, the Memorial Park, to the Cross Timber Park, to make what people are already doing safe. So those are the things that are in there. Since I'm speaking already, I'm going to say, said it last time, I'm comfortable with the five, five and a half, as was presented with the debt structure, that, that we could get to August with the idea of, that's probably a pretty safe bet, that we don't have to worry about the I N S rate, the debt rate, and August, September timeframe. And if we have a great year of sales tax and everything like that, and we can start budgeting a little bit more at that time, then we can look at, you know, the projects. So I'm just going to say that I'm comfortable with more of the five and a half number than the seven and a half, so.
So to that point, with all due respect, I believe that we should take every penny of this discretionary spending and put it towards roads and why, I think the parks are a great idea. I think that needs to go to G O, to, you know, public vote, and come up with a much broader picture, broader set of projects of what we want to do to make it worthwhile and handle it that way. That's what I would prefer, just my two cents worth.
I like the idea of the, the first yellow box, and then I'd like to add on to that parks, some of that parks. I think we can, we could do a good road project in parks and have best of both. So.
All right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with the roughly five point five million dollars, which is really the first box in concrete, the, the main arteries of the city, plus the, the parks recommendation. So I like that a lot.
So we need a motion?
Well, you just need to direct staff, because I've got to, I've got to tell Eric Maha to start preparing a number.
So we're good if I'm hearing the council correct, for, I think the consensus.
Do we need a motion, or what do we need to?
You can just, yeah, motion to direct staff.
I think a motion would be appropriate. To direct staff to prepare.
To prepare a certificate of obligation and amount not to exceed.
Five point five.
I would make a motion to direct staff to prepare the amount to not, not to exceed five point five million for parks and roads projects.
We have a motion.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, just before, I want to, kind of in between, I like Greg's point of getting the most bang for your buck right now, but I also see the, the difficulty right now with getting supplies, and if we go all out here and things are delayed, having worked some construction previously this year, seeing, you know, a company that needed five thousand yards of concrete, and one contractor would say, we can get you six hundred every other Friday, and another would say, we can get you three hundred and fifty on Tuesdays, and they're just logistics like that. So zero percent interest is great if you can get a low rate, but at the same time, there's other issues. So finding a more, I think, safe perspective, taking that five, we know that we can do that, we don't have to raise the tax rate in theory, but going that route gives me more, just feel better about that.
I would be clear, you're not getting a zero percent interest.
Yeah. We were going.
Greg's been trying to get him nailed down on several things.
I'm saying, even if it was a zero percent, it's still, there are still contingencies, other issues out there other than an interest rate to drive what our decision-making process should be, according to what I've, it's based on what I've experienced so far.
Sure.
And that's the, that really is the X factor, that we're seeing that in construction.
We're seeing that in development, is that, you saw it with the bathrooms here, is the supply chain issues are real, whose fault it is is beyond the scope of this council, but they are real. And so I think that gives Derek some concern and some pause as well.
I think the, the important piece is the mayor, we're good stewards of the citizens' money, try not to raise the taxes, but you see real work being done, and I think that's important, and everybody gets to enjoy the parks, so.
So we got a motion for not to exceed five point five.
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number eleven, resolution joining the state of Texas in political subdivisions as a party in the Texas Opiate Settlement Agreement, authorized the city manager to execute settlement participation forms. Mr. Grimes?
I want to let Pat take this one.
Mr. Chesser.
Thank you, Mayor. The Office of Texas Attorney General announced the global settlement had been reached with three major opioid distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen, and one manufacturer, Johnson &amp; Johnson. The distributor settlement is for twenty-one billion dollars. J and J's settlement is for five billion dollars. Texas could receive as much as one point one seven B and from the distributors, and two point six eight million from J and J. The actual amount Texas and the city of Willow Park receive will depend upon our participation in this settlement. And so that's what we have here today, is a resolution indicating our commitment to settle. Right now, it's still dependent upon how many cities participate and pass this resolution. The city of Willow Park is estimated to receive approximately thirty-two, almost thirty-three thousand in direct payments in this settlement. Those funds might be used on any item that has a nexus to opioids. What does that mean? It means, for example, if we decided to use, we wanted to save five percent of our police force time is spent on fighting opioid-related crimes, then we could spend it on our personnel expenses in the police department. Then we'll also be eligible for, there'll be about an eighty-one million dollar allocation for Region Ten, which Willow Park is a part of, and that will be basically a grant basis, you can apply for it, and rules will be adopted by the Texas Opiate Council, who will administer those funds, and we'll have to abide by those as far as the application for those funds. So I recommend we approve it, otherwise the only option will be to sue them ourselves, and that would cost a lot of money. So I'd recommend we approve this resolution, committing the city to be a part of this settlement. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. Do we have any questions, or we have a motion in the, in the docket for someone to make a motion?
I move the city of Willow Park adopt and approve of the Texas term sheet and authorize the city manager to execute participation forms as it relates to the settlement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Item number twelve, consider an act of items to be considered for future council meetings?
I have, we're going to issue the debt for not to exceed five and a half million that y'all just voted on moments ago. I also have, we'll do the drainage update with Derek on that as well. And I believe there's one more, but I can't remember what it is off the top of my head.
So I would like to add to that in a near future meeting is to begin looking at a road utility similar to the drainage utility fee for maintaining the asphalt roads, the ones we put in just a few years ago are ready to start deteriorating significantly, and we have to do something about it, and we're going to build more of them, so we got to have a fee or a budget in place to handle that.
Street maintenance?
Yes.
Yeah, road utility.
Yeah, street maintenance fee.
Michelle did say, they had several streets they were going to work on when they tried out.
Yes, I believe they started doing that, if they have started today, they'll do it tomorrow.
Because I walk Emsley Road, and there's a couple in there that goes up to my waist almost.
Yeah, but I mean, those, those are the ones that need work, but I mean, some that we just rebuilt three years ago are starting to.
Are you talking, just for clarification purposes, you're talking about?
Maintenance of the roads we rebuild now.
We just, we did Lori Lane three years ago, we need to do some fog seal or something.
Right, right. Another thing I'd like to add is I understand we're getting a city hall update in January. Would I like to have staff start coming up with plans for what we need to do for interim? And I, you know, we got congestion in the office space here, so if we need to turn this council chamber into offices, and look at off-site council chambers, or whatever we have to do, I'd like to see a plan for that and start looking at some costs for that.
Okay.
And then getting into the cold season, a year ago, during the big cold snap, we had a emergency generator situation where we needed for water. Do we have a plan in place for supporting that, for renting, or purchasing, or whatever we need to do there?
You mean to have Michelle give a, me and Michelle give you enough?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, just we're not in the same boat we were, potentially running out of water in the city.
Yeah, an update. I like that idea, preparedness for.
Yeah.
We were going to partner with, we wanted to partner with Willow Park Baptist Church, and they're a ninety thousand square foot gym for a generator, and I talked to Pastor Bozier, and the church is doing it. He said they're doing it for the community. So that'll be a space in the future, short future, that should we have something like that happen, there'll be space. And we're also, we met with the pastors of some churches, what day was it, Monday?
Yes, yes.
And we're going to talk to other churches about some cots and stuff to furnish it. Should something like that happen, we've got something in place for the city. So those are all great things, and I would like to thank the church for that.
I have my list. Thank you. I wrote down Greg, so I don't bore you through, Greg, with your list?
I know.
Okay. One thing we've discussed previously, we, Jake presented that we do have funds that we're potentially using for water, wastewater infrastructures. I think we were going to have Derek give us an update on water lines, our water, wastewater infrastructure, to see what our priorities were, so if we could, since he's not doing anything else, could we have him, you know, don't know when you want to do that, December, January, but have him provide that discussion regarding what our infrastructure, what those funds could be used for, prioritization. I also have, we have the rate study presentation, I know you're waiting for.
We're meeting with him Friday morning?
Okay, so whenever that's ready to be. We have a list of ordinances that I know, I think Tony and Betty are working on, that we're going to be presenting, yes, some of the ordinance updates, we do have several that we've discovered.
It might end up being a little bit longer.
We have a lot of ordinances that, well, we may need to hit some first.
We have a lot of cleaning up to do, and I found, we discovered that there, it's a, it's a mess, which I knew it was, but.
Some missing ordinances, I know parks, we had this issue, so, but if we do have quite a few, then, then let's not wait for them to do them all, let's get some rolling because that could be a nightmare.
I think we have some that are ready to go.
Right. I know, talking about updating parks for appointments, then.
We'll probably, whatever we have ready to go, January, or whenever Betty and Tony can get it. We've discovered some other issues in the process of doing this.
Yes. Which is good, and, but, but we have some we know we need to get.
But we're, there's no, to your point, there's no need to wait the whole, to do all of this.
We have Parkland dedication, we have, yeah, so we definitely have some ordinances there. So that, I think we had discussed along with that, that that'll be some ordinances, is reappointment of board members, this may be stealing some of your comments, but reappointment of all of our, other than maybe the two individuals that we appointed tonight for B O A enters, but using January as a timeframe to reappoint parks.
And some of that's done by ordinance too, so.
Right, and so we may need to revise those ordinances in order to just say.
I haven't had a chance to look, is that in your code? Do you, is that, Betty? Do we have in our zoning, is that in there? Where it says, are they even odd numbers, how many people are odd?
Yes.
We have all of that, we'll, we need to do some adjustments. Okay, is it now normally done in January, or is it whenever there's a?
I think we've missed it with October. Yeah, normally appointed in September or by October first.
We'll work on the ordinance.
Right. So, hey, I direct staff to work on that, because, because you clearly already are. So we have the drainage, so those are the things that I had on my list. And then the only other thing I would say that would be, Greg mentioned directing staff to work on kind of an office plan. If as part of that, you could let us know, we've had a lot of staff changes with individuals leaving and other people spilling in those things. If we could kind of get a staff summary of how the workings are going on with, who's doing what?
We.
That would be great, because I know we've had new people come in, and we're shifting things around, so it would be nice to present to council.
And, yes, I was going to address some of that in my, in my comments.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm leading you into that, so.
Is this, I'm a little confused here, are these things that you're wanting on the future agenda, or are these your comments?
Those are her.
Both. So the last one is a comment, everything else would be a future agenda, I know. Does that help?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on council meetings?
Yes, to piggyback off of Greg's update from Michelle regarding, I guess, winterization is making sure that the generators we do have, they are all serviced prior to getting, start getting colder.
That's good, yeah, that'll be part of them.
Yeah, that'd be, I want to make sure that that's part of it, so that way they're serviced ahead of schedule, and we're not trying to find somebody during the, the holiday season to make sure that we, we get those serviced, and if we needed them, they are ready. Also, we, I would like if we could get half an associates to come in and give us an update as far as the pump station, and anything else, if there's anything with Hudson Oaks that hasn't been done, to make sure our friends in Hudson Oaks are, are going to get taken care of by this spring. Also, I know one of the other things that's coming to is, is potentially groundbreaking for the new wastewater treatment plant. Just want to see what, what's going on with that, making sure we're, we're staying ahead of it, of the new site.
We haven't even been permitted from T C Qs.
Okay. So, so, perfect. So we're just waiting on that, so.
Yes, just two things for me, if you can.
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Commercial development update, restaurant update, got some questions on to the east of Parker County Ice House, and then, you know, what are the Wokes doing right there on the river?
Okay.
If, if that's obviously lower on the agenda, but people ask. If, if that's obviously lower on the agenda, but people ask, and I'm like, well, I'm not sure, but I'll get back to you.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Lou Casey?
Do you want this on the agenda?
You can rack it, you can rack and stack it, just if we can, you know, if Ryan wants to put it in his comments at the end, that's fine too. I don't know if it needs to be official, just so we can put it out there.
Just for an update.
Yeah, just an update on, on what commercial developments, what restaurants are coming in, those sorts of things.
Contreras Cafe.
I'm the head chef there.
Okay, thanks, everyone. City managers' comments?
Um, I know that y'all have received an email regarding the ARPA funds, and I replied to a couple of you guys, wanted to just clarify this, that I'd spoken with the city of Weatherford and the city of Hudson Oaks, they are both planning on utilizing the ARPA funds. Betty has spoken with the city of Stevensville, and not only are they planning to use their funds, they've already expended some of their funds. And so visiting with engineering firms and consulting firms, which is part of this process, they are getting inundated with RFPs to help cities navigate these funds, indicating that they, that other cities are going to be doing this. Where we are with that process is we have, y'all have approved an RFP, we are working on finalizing the RFP for engineering and for admin. The admin's a lot easier than the engineering. We will put those out at some point. We consulted with TML, TML gave us some guidance earlier today, and, and moreover, they're kind of saying, this, this kind of started with about 65 cities across the state who have turned their funds back in, they have forfeited those funds. The concern was that if you accept the ARPA funds, do you have to do a vaccine mandate as part of the Biden rule? I don't know what the rule number is, but as part of that rule, the answer is no. TAC has said no, TML has said no, we visited with Phil King's office, they have indicated, and I'm going to quote them here, "The prevailing opinion across the board by entities advising counties and cities is when these entities taking federal dollars from ARPA is not exempt and considered federal contractor, therefore not subject to mandates." And if there was some kind of action from the federal government, they feel confident the Attorney General would step in and litigate. So we're in pretty good company to go ahead and proceed with expending these funds. Clearly, as the information changes, we will keep you guys posted and advised, and if y'all direct us to not use those funds, I'd like to know sooner rather than later, before we get into a project.
We'd like to use them. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
We will be closed Thursday in, for Veterans Day, and I want to thank all the veterans, thank you Tyler for your service.
And the mayor, Mayor Moss.
Mayor Moss.
He wasn't born then, he wouldn't know.
So those conclude my, I was going to, hold on, I was going to say the one, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. You mentioned staff changes, we are looking to maybe add a few more personnel, and maybe cancel a contract with a, with a provider and bring in some in-house. I'm not really prepared to tell you the full plan tonight, I can tell you that we're looking at some cost savings in that area, and I just don't have the final numbers yet, and is Candy still out there, did she leave?
She left.
I want to thank Candy for coming back from vacation.
Yeah.
She's not allowed to go on vacation again, and, but I'm glad she got to spend some time with family.
May I piggyback off of?
Yes.
I hope I'm not taking your story.
No.
But I want to inform, the restrooms were set today. Park, if you haven't seen them, right by, the plumbing and electrical will take place tomorrow, maybe be finished Friday, we'll have an inspection and a walkthrough, but it's there. We still have some work we have to do around it, but it is sitting there.
Looks great.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'd like to thank the Parks Board and Leah for the park and the restroom, it looks super, I'm excited. And then to all our veterans in the city, thank you for your service, active, retired, and we're grateful to all that you've done. I have nothing else, any, anyone have any comments?
I would like to, a reminder that this is the only meeting for November, and we will have our next meeting December 14th, and that will be the only meeting for December as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I will adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, Irene.